Oh, yeah. Sorry, it's been so long since we've been here, too.
It's been a long time since we've been here, too.
All right, everybody, let's go ahead and get started. It's about that time. Welcome to the February 8th meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Thanks for coming. Can we do a roll call, please?
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Lisa Dole.
Here.
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Ken Ayers.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Del Smythe.
Here.
Michelle McNulty.
Here.
And Tanya Hickock is supposed to arrive shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like everything's gone. We need Tanya for the consent agenda for the resolution, so we'll work that in when she gets here, maybe reorder things a little bit if we have to. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And can I get a motion to approve? Mr. Ayers, motion, and Ms. McKay seconds. Is there a discussion?
I was absent on December 14th and will abstain from voting.
Oh, okay.
Is there any discussion? Okay, can we vote? And a motion passes. All right, moving. Okay, item C is special order. Does anyone have any disclosures this evening? Mrs. McNulty, and by the way, welcome. Thanks for joining us. So I was going to do that at roll call. I'm getting ahead of myself. But, welcome.
I don't know if this is the proper time to do it, but I just wanted to give my disclosure that I abstain from voting on the minutes and will abstain from participating in the consent agenda as I was not yet seated on the board.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
No other disclosures? Okay, brings us to the consent agenda, which we're going to hold off on until Tanya gets here. Pretty much brings us to the regular agenda. Oh, we do. Who's that?
Okay, um, yeah, I... I wasn't here for that hearing, so I'm not going to... I'm going to abstain from voting on it. Sorry.
Ms. Iker.
Thank you. As Ms. Dole, I was similarly absent from the last meeting, so I will abstain from voting on the consent agenda.
Any other disclosures? Nobody? Okay. So we'll move on to the regular agenda, which is the public hearings. So the first case, what we'll do is we'll introduce the case, and the staff will present it, give us all the details and stuff. There will be some opportunity for everyone to speak. The petitioner gets 10 minutes to speak, and then if you want, you can reserve your time for later for rebuttal or whatnot. The general public can speak as well. You're limited to... If you're with a group, you get five minutes, and if you're an individual, you get three. So we've got a clock up here with a timer on it, and it'll blink. I think it starts blinking red, right? So it turns yellow when there's a minute left, and then when it starts blinking really fast red, it's pretty much done. If it looks like it's going to explode, then probably wrap it up. We try to stick to it, you know, so that everyone's got a fair opportunity to speak the same amount of time, so we'd appreciate that. So with that, we'll introduce the first case, which is case number 2018-0008, which is... Which one is this? Dimensional variance from 2006-0 in Girdwood. So the police, the staff, please describe the notice that was given in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A total of 124 public hearing notices were mailed by the Planning Department on December 22nd, 2017. The applicant provided letters of support for the variance, granting the variance from the 10 closest properties. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors passed a resolution in support of the variance. No letters or calls were received by the Planning Department in opposition to the granting of the variance. Thank you.
Does anyone have any objections to the sufficiency of the notice? Seeing none. Looks good, so will the staff please present the case?
Thank you. This is a request for a variance from Girdwood Residential Dimensional Standards to allow a house, deck, and stairs to encroach 10 feet 100% into the secondary front setback along Fernie Loop. The owner enlarged the existing house and deck without a land use permit in 1996, which created the encroachment. They relied on an ASBilt that did not show the required setbacks. The encroachment was discovered while preparing the house for sale. The house has already removed encroachments into Fernie Loop right-of-way and obtained an encroachment permit for the part of the house that encroaches into the Chugatch Electric Association easement. So if you look at page eight of your packet, it shows the ASBilt that was on record not having... not showing any setbacks. And of course, the setbacks changed with the adoption of the Girdwood Code, the original Girdwood Code, and then the code after the comprehensive plan. And to show the progression of the property, if you move from page eight to page nine, then you see the encroachments into the required setbacks and the Fernie Loop right-of-way. That was discovered in the fall. Now, the property today is on page 10. That's how the property looks today, and the purpose of the three ASBilts is to show sort of the historical nature of the property or form of the structure. Page 11 shows, and 12 show photographs of how the house looks from the street. The CEA encroachment permit can be found on page 28 of your packet, and the resolution of support from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors on page 49. The 10 letters of support for granting of the variance from the neighbors, that's on page 32 onward. As you can see from the zoning map on page six of your packet, this is a pretty special property. It's sort of an island surrounded by right-of-way. It has no neighbors. The Planning Department finds that standards one and two are met, that standard three is substantially met, and that standards four, five, and six are met... seven and eight are met as well. The department is recommending approval, the granting of the variance as shown in the ASBilt, subject to conditions one and two, which are standard conditions of approval. That's my brief presentation. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions of staff? Doesn't look like it. So we'll go ahead and open the public testimony part of things. So will the applicant or the applicant's representative, please, come forward, state your name, and please spell it for the record?
My name is Rebecca Reichlin, and I am here representing the Armstrongs owners for the 114 Fernie Loop in Girdwood. The spelling of my name is R-E-B-E-C-C-A, last name Reichlin, R-E-I-C-H-L-I-N.
Thank you. Would you please...
I'd like...
You've got 10 minutes. Go ahead. Thanks.
I'd like to thank you for your time and for hearing this presentation, and I'd also like to reserve two minutes of my time for rebuttal, please. In the matter of variance standard A, 114 Fernie Loop does have exceptional and extraordinary physical circumstances that are not applicable to other land in the same zoning district. It is a very unique lot, not only in Girdwood, but as we understand it from the Planning and Zoning Department, also in most of the municipality. It has two front yard setbacks. There's a 20-foot setback around Davos, and then as it loops around Fernie Loop, there is a 10-foot secondary front yard setback. It also has a 20-foot Chugatch electric easement running through the entirety of the property with very little overlap on the front yard setback off of Davos. There are no side or rear yard setbacks, which can be flexible to other GR2 properties in the same district. So when you compare this lot of a little more than 10,000 square feet to a more typical 12,500-square-foot lot in the same district or area, and then you eliminate the setbacks from the property, a typical lot has about 52% buildable area compared to this Fernie Loop lot having about 32% buildable area. Also, the kidney shape of the lot comes into effect, and it is only 38 feet wide at its widest point where you are not encumbered by an easement or a setback, thus creating a further hardship. In regards to the matter of variance B, a strict application of the code does require a hard... does create a hardship on the property owner and would deprive that owner of enjoyed rights that other properties in the same district have. When you strictly apply the application of the code with having only 32% of their property which could be used for improvements, that leaves about 70% of the property which is off limits to construction. And in regard to building placement, approximately 27% of the lot is available for a reasonable exterior dimension of 24 feet. If you were to add any other decks additionally to the main house, they would fall within a setback. In matter of variance C, the hardship is not self-imposed, and the special conditions are not a result of the owner's actions. The original structure and most of the existing deck were built in 1977 before Girdwood zoning rules included setbacks. The owners did purchase the property in 1987. At that time, they received the 1985 ASBilt by land back that... excuse me, land tech that showed no setbacks or easement, but does show the wraparound deck. In 1996, they did use this 1985 ASBilt to add to the south house addition and enlarge the deck both south and east. Because the 1985 land tech survey did not show setbacks, the owners were not aware of the restriction of the use of their property. So after having made those improvements, the house remained in that shape for 21 years. In the matter of variance D, a granite... excuse me, variance standard D, a granite variance will not adversely affect the neighbor's use of the properties nor inhibit their access. Most of the construction in the 10-foot secondary setback is both deck and stairs. Less than three square feet of one corner of the house is over the setback, approximately 20 inches. The house and deck have been in place for 21 years without neighbor complaints or inconvenience. Of the 13 immediate neighbors, 10 have responded with written support for the dimensional variance application, and three did not respond at all. The nearest neighbors are across a 50- to 60-foot wide right-of-way. In the matter of variance standard E, a granite variance will not change the character of the zoning district, is in the keeping with the intent of the code, and does not allow a non-permitted use in the district. The existing house and deck do meet the intent of the GR2 district to establish and develop residential neighborhoods of single-family detached and two-family development. The orientation of the house and deck are consistent with the existing patterns. Other than the setback encroachments, the house and deck meet all other dimensional and zoning requirements of the GR2 zoning district. In the matter of variance standard F, a granite variance does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. It would not add to the vehicular congestion. It will not reduce the fire separation to be less than 20... the required 20 feet. It will not change the consistency of the residential seascape. The structure's bulk and lot coverage would be in character with the GR2 zoning. It does not negatively affect the Girdwood Road Service area's snow removal operations. In the matter of variance standard G, persons with disabilities provided with access as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act and reasonable accommodation, this standard is not applicable in this case. In the matter of variance standard H, a granite variance would be the minimum variance making possible a reasonable use of the land due to the limited buildable area on the lot, the placement of the original house and small deck towards the east of the lot, the rapid narrowing of the lot to the east, the lack of setback flexibility which is available to other owners in the GR2 district, and the existing deck and orientation towards Mount Alyeska is typical and adds to the property value and owner's full enjoyment of the property. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Three minutes left. Does the board have any questions of the applicant? Does the staff have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, staff has no comments. This was a very well-prepared application and defense of the standards. The house is very small. It's a 1,060-square-foot, single-family house. The staff supports the variance application for the reasons stated in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? So you have three minutes. Would you please state your name and spell it, please?
Marco Zaccaro, last name Z-A-C-C-A-R-O, first name Marco, M-A-R-C-O. I'm just here to speak in support of the variance. The house was built before the zoning setbacks were in place, when the deck was built with incorrect information provided by the surveyor, and that it didn't show the setbacks. And the... when the owner found that the deck and steps, the entry steps, were in the right-of-way, they corrected that, and they moved the steps as far back, as close to the house as they could practically make them, and still preserve a safe means of egress from the front door. That's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Yep, or the speaker? Staff? Questions?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to testify on this matter? Okay, does the... does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
It's the applicant. Would you like to use your three minutes to speak of anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, then the public hearing is closed, and the matter will rest with the board. Can I have a positive motion, please? Ms. McKay?
In the matter of case 2018-0008, I move that we grant a variance from AMC Table 21.09-5 to allow a house, deck, and stairs to encroach into the secondary front yard setback.
Seconded by Ms. Iker. Yeah, subject to...
Oh, subject to... I'm sorry. Subject to conditions one and two on page five of the packet.
Thank you. And seconded by Ms. Iker.
Yes, I second.
Ms. McKay, would you like to speak to your motion?
Okay, um, well, I don't really agree with... I didn't know about the rules defense, or the ASBilt didn't show the setbacks, which they rarely do. I agree with staff that the six standards or the eight standards are met, mostly on the uniqueness of this lot and the fact that the conditions have existed for 21 years without a problem, and I'm going to support my motion.
Thank you. Ms. Iker, would you like to speak?
Thank you. I also concur with staff's recommendations and plan to support the motion.
Is there any other discussion from the board? Anyone like to add anything? Any questions of staff? Staff, any?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, no, staff has no comment.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to vote. I guess let's vote. And the motion passes. The variance is granted. Thank you very much for coming out. We appreciate your testimony. And we're going to take just a short break here. Mrs. Hickock's here, so we're going to take care of some quick business before we do the next case. So we're going to go back to the consent agenda. So we've got resolutions for approval as resolution case 2017-006, request for variance from table 2110-6 to allow a detached garage encroach into the yard setback. Can I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Ayers?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. McKay.
Second.
Would you like to speak or... Do you have anything discussion? Ms. McKay, good. Okay, let's vote. And the motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much for coming in, Ms. Hickock. So thank you for your patience with that. We'll move on to the next case, which will be case number 2018-0014. And can the staff please describe the notice in this case?
A total of 98 public hearing notices were mailed on December 27th. No comments were received, and in addition, no comments were received from the community councils.
Does anyone have any objections to sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none. Will the staff please present the case?
This is a request for a variance from AMC Table 2106-1, Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow an existing garage to encroach 1.4 feet into the required 25-foot side yard setback, and also to allow the existing garage overhang/deck to encroach 5.32 feet into the 25-foot side yard setback. Upon completion of the garage construction in 2016 and the subsequent completion of the ASBilt in 2017, it was discovered that the new garage and the garage overhang/deck were encroaching into the side yard setback. Now, this was a... it has a complicated history of changes and things that have occurred over the years. So I had asked the petitioner's representative, Chris Burt, to prepare a diagram, and that diagram's on page 13. It's the historical timeline sketches, and I asked him to kind of lay it out in such a way that it was kind of... it would explain in a pictorial form along with kind of a written text that would accompany each of the drawings to kind of show what happened at what time frame. And if you read through that, I think that alone kind of explains the changes to the property over the years since 1967, and illustrates where the board is tonight in having to make this decision. And I think Chris did a really nice job with laying out and explaining the situation. The Hoskins were approved for a minor modification in 2016 to allow a garage overhang to encroach 3.25 feet into the side yard setback. However, the approval was for less than the amount of the encroachment requiring the Hoskins to physically cut off and remove an additional 2.2 feet of the overhang. This situation came about due to an error on the 1996 ASBilt, which showed the building corner of the primary structure as 23.2 feet from the 33-foot section line, and the correct dimension discovered in 2017 showed the dimension as 21.4 feet. This discrepancy results in the garage and the garage overhang deck as still located within the 25-foot side yard setback. Moving on to the findings. On the first one, the standard is met. Moving on to the findings, on the first one, the standard is met. The extraordinary physical circumstance of the subject property is the sloping topography of the lot. The slope is approximately 10% in the vicinity around the existing house and garage, and the lot slopes uphill to the southeast. This middle notes that the Huskins are advancing in age, and an architect was hired to design and attach garage to the back of the primary residence and upgrade the front entrance of the home to improve accessibility into the home. Additionally, the Huskins have also elevated a portion of the driveway to reduce the slope and therefore the number of steps to their front entryway. These physical circumstances of the property appear to be more pronounced on this lot than neighboring lots to the immediate south into the southwest based on MOA topographic information. As for the second condition, the standard is met. The R6 district regulation requires a 25-foot setback from the side yard property line. The topography adjacent to the house is the least steep and was the most conducive to site the new garage. The strict application of the district regulations would create an undue hardship upon the property owners owing to the need to build the garage in a viable location while still being accessible. Third standard, this standard is met. Garages are a necessary amenity for living in a northern climate. This need increases with advancing age. The hardship is not self-imposed. The house was located on the lot in 1967 before the 1975 zoning of the area. The ASBelt survey error from 1996 was not caused by the Huskins and was not discovered until 2017. The architect used the erroneous ASBelt as the basis of the design, which is also not the fault of the owners. The slope of the lot is an issue that the Huskins have dealt with by placing the garage in the most level area adjacent to the house and have raised the elevation of a portion of the driveway to reduce the slope near the house. Moving on to the fourth standard, this standard is met. There are no adverse effects on the adjacent properties. The owners have obtained seven letters of support from the neighbors. The next standard, the standard is met. The requested variance is dimensional and would not allow a prohibited use. This variance will not change the character of the zoning district. The next standard is also met. There are no identified health or safety issues with this property. The owners are seeking relief to retain a garage and a garage overhang deck. As noted above, the owners have obtained seven letters of support from the neighbors. As for the standard dealing with ADA, this standard is met. This standard is not applicable to detached, single-family residences, duplexes, and triplexes. The last standard is also met. This request is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land while a corner of the garage and a portion of the garage overhang deck encroach into the side yard setback. There is still 52.7 feet separating the structures from the east property line. That's all I have.
Thank you. Does the board members have questions of staff? Okay, will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state your name and spell it for us, please?
Chris Burt. C-H-R-I-S-B-U-R-T.
Okay, you have 10 minutes?
Don't really have a lot to add. Did a pretty thorough job reading through all the different options like the other lady did there. I just say, if you guys look at the sketch on sheet 13, I'll just kind of go through a brief overview of that because there's a lot of words, and it's tiny on the printout here. Basically, the original structure was built on this lot, 1967, figure one. There was a section line on the east side of the property, which is not right-of-way, but it's kind of treated as right-of-way, those big old sections of the lot there. So it was a way to get access to the lots behind the property should those lots ever be developed. In '75, that's when the zoning actually came into place, so that's when the side yard setback actually became part of zoning. And so that side yard setback by definition comes from the edge of that section line, not the property line itself. So it's significantly away from the eastern property line. In '96, they had built a shed, a large shed, in a different part of their lot, so they had to go get the permitting, get ASBelt done, and everything to close out those permits. It was at that time that they'd spotted that there was, the existing house actually was encroaching. They got non-conforming determination. It was agreed upon that the house was there before all the zoning, so it was fine. That's kind of showing the little, whereas the 21.4, that's the dimension that it should have been on that ASBelt. That ASBelt actually, at least, that dimension is 23.2 feet. But that was the only ASBelt of record that they had when they went to go build the garage in, I think, 2014. They got an architect to go get a garage designed for them and everything and figure out the site. They used that old ASBelt, but it had the wrong dimension. So basically, once the thing was constructed, they kind of realized, oh, we're going to be encroaching, this thing's off a little bit. As staff said, they went and got a minor dimensional variance, which the code can allow a certain percentage into that just through, just the staff having to have the hearing and everything like that. And they were approved for that, but that's still, like you said, it still left a portion of it. It was granted like 3.25 feet, but it was like five and a half feet was out there. So they actually went and redesigned that portion of the roof deck overhang. They had a full beam that went to that corner, the post, everything. They had to remove that, put a new steel beam in the garage structure, and cut off a section. So if you look at the little detail, there's kind of a notch cut out of the square there. And it's not exactly parallel with the section line because it was just, at that time, it was just based on architects' drawings, so that's where they thought the section line was. So it's not exactly parallel, but the intent was for them to cut back to make it parallel and get everything conforming. As soon as everything was done, they just went to get, close out the permit. So they had an ASBelt done, get structural ASBelt, go close out the permit. And that's when it was spotted that dimension that on the '96 ASBelt was 23.2 is actually 21.4. So it basically shifted their whole design, two feet back into the easement, back into the setback. And so that's how we got to here. So basically, they just want to get the variance for a little corner of the structure itself, and then, as staff said, the garage overhang/deck. There's a couple photos on page like 31-ish, if you wanted to skip to that. You can kind of see, this is the corner that's kind of in question. And you can see where the deck, the corner of the deck isn't squared off. They have that part where, this is the finished, obviously. And so that's where they're talking about. And like we said, the kind of intent for the side yard setbacks is so you're not building right up against a neighboring property and, you know, in a rural district. With the section line easement there, though, they're still 53 feet, 52 and a half feet away from their side yard. And while that is a right-of-way, it's, there's, all the other lots in the surrounding area have developed right-of-way access. So that section line will never be developed as part of any kind of a road system to get access anywhere. Everywhere has access to developed right-of-way. And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Looks like you've got about four and a half minutes left. Is there any questions of the applicant from the board? Five and a half? Isn't it 10? No one has any questions? So this all kind of stemmed from the '96 survey being a mistake, huh? It just got perpetuated from there?
Yeah, and it's for additions to structures that are built. You don't, you know, if it was a new structure, you'd get a plot plan done, you did the survey done right before you did the new work. The rules for doing additions is you can use old ASBelt. You don't have to go and get a plot plan done. And so it just kind of, the ASBelt that everything was based off of had the wrong dimension in the critical location. And that's just kind of, you know, where it got from here, and the Huskins have done everything. As they've noticed this stuff right-of-way, notified the city, trying to figure out what their options are, trying to get this addressed. It's not like they're trying to sweep it under the rug. It's just, it is what it is, you know? And they didn't get, they didn't need to get a full survey until the work was completed to close out the permit. And then, so that's when the dimension was noticed.
Okay, thanks. Does staff, you guys have any questions of the applicant?
I don't, no.
Okay, thanks. I think you've got four and a half minutes. Oh, does it? Oh, five and a half minutes. You've got five and a half minutes left. Is there anybody from the public or anyone else that would like to speak? No? So do you have a rebuttal? Staff rebuttal?
I don't, Mr. Chair, no.
And would you like to talk for another five and a half minutes?
Not particularly, no.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, and the matter will rest with the board. So may I please have a positive motion? Ms. Iker?
Yes, and case matter 2018-0014, I make a motion to grant a variance from AMC Table 21.6-01, dimensional standards residential districts, allowing an existing garage to encroach 1.4 feet into the required 25-foot setback yard, setback, and allow the garage overhang deck to encroach 5.32 feet into the 25-foot side yard setback in the R6 district, subject to the conditions on page five of the packet, one and two.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Doll. Doll? Doll, sorry. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I plan to support the motion based on the recommendations that are in the packet, and I don't think I have anything in addition to add, subject to the testimony we heard today.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Doll, do you have anything to add?
No, I concur with the staff recommendation.
Would any of the other board members like to add anything? That's all. It's an item? Oh, you want to add something? Go ahead, sorry.
I would like to take a moment to commend the property owners for their diligent efforts throughout the ownership on the property. I've served on this board many years, and very rare is it that we find that a property owner becomes aware of a mistake and takes prudent actions to correct it, whether it's their own or someone else's. I'm particularly speaking to the actions you took in 1996 when you were building the unrelated garage off to the side, and you realized that your house may have an issue, and took steps to get non-conforming determination status. And then again, in 2016, when the architect designed the addition to encroach in, you, instead of just coming to the zoning board at that time, you took steps to reconfigure and make modifications to the add-on. And so as a board member who hears these cases, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the board? Then we shall vote. And the motion passes, and it is, variance is granted. Thank you very much for coming out. We appreciate your time. And thanks to staff, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I say something?
Sure.
When it comes time for us to write, you know, the resolution, we really appreciate having findings from the board members, and there weren't many tonight, and so I just wonder and hope that in the future, we can have more kind of solid findings. Otherwise, you know, we're just have to draw findings from our own staff report, you know, without sort of the benefit. But, I mean, you did say tonight you agreed with the findings in the staff report, so we'll just base it off that. But I haven't been here in a while, and I remember in the past, you used to go through it kind of methodically and talk about each of the standards and why you supported or didn't support it. So I was kind of surprised tonight when I didn't hear that.
You guys just did such an excellent job of summarizing.
Well, that's, there's no need for that.
There's nothing to add. We'll keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it. That's it for the public hearings and all of that, so we don't have any reports, I don't think, unless anybody's got anything. You have one thing? Go ahead.
Through the chair, just to let you know, there is not a March meeting. There are no cases. March is normally the annual election of officers for chair and vice chair, and so if we have any cases in April, we'll do it then.
Mr. Ayers?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a question of staff as well. I've noticed in the last couple of packets, you're referring to the standards met numerically. The applicants are referring to them alphabetically, and it would be nice if they matched up in the future.
And I just noticed that tonight. I made the corrections in my packet, but it always sounds weird to say, you know, the letters instead of the numbers, but I guess we're all going to have to get used to that.
Either or, as far as I'm concerned. Alphabetically. Any other comments? If not, can we get a motion to adjourn? Ms. Iker has a motion, and Ms. McNulty seconded. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did it. I could do it. It's a spring year. No, 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 oh, don't. I know. Do you want to see me start crying? Alies is four, and so maybe five in the fall here, so two. Okay.